Okay, welcome back. Again, please, your cellphones, make sure they're off if you've used them while we were on break. We are going to continue on, and at this point in time, we're going to ask for some public, any public comment. People, please step forward, line up in the center aisle. And we're going to be, this is going to be a longer meeting than normal, so, and we are going to work through lunch, but the public is welcome to make any comments that they wish to make at this point in time, and then we will follow that with our staff report. So please come forward, anybody that wishes to speak. And you will come up and you will state your name and spell it out, because we are without a court reporter today, sir, and everybody else. And we want to, Audrey, do you need to swear these people in?
Yes.
You want to swear, all come forward, and she'll swear all of you in at one time. It'll save us time. Everybody come to the front first.
Wow.
Hold your place, all of you? My goodness. Thank you.
Okay, raise your right-
Oh, yeah, so before you do that, can we have a roll call? Thank you.
Robert and Serpy.
Here.
Chairman Brunswick.
Here.
Richard Donnelly.
There.
James Royster.
Here. Proceed, thank you.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm testimony you provide is truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Please state your names on the record, and if anybody was not sworn in, let me know after we go forward. If somebody do to the line.
Pull that microphone up, sir, to, thank you.
My name is Larry Pierce, P.E.A.R.C.E. I've been a visitor and part-time resident of the south end of Fort Myers Beach since 1971, homeowner since 1981, full-time resident since 1995. During these many years, I've traveled Benita Beach Road more times than I can begin to count, and have watched the growth and evolution of this entire area, including 41, from two lanes to what we have today. I wanted to just speak very briefly in support of this project. I think what I've seen in the spirit of cooperation from the developer to plan this development of this important piece of land in coordination with the town and the planning for Benita Beach Road speaks well to both the plans of the town and the developer to make Benita Beach Road something that will be an even further enhanced spine of our community, and to improve its attractiveness, the ability to have services and residences for the growth that's definitely coming, one way or the other. And so I think the foresight that I see here is going to speak well, and I'm totally in favor of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, step forward, again, your name, please, and spell your name for the record.
My name is Chuck Lieske, L.I.E.S.K.E. I live in Spanish Wells, next door. I've been in southwest Florida for almost 20 years. I've spent all of my adult life in construction, real estate, and development. I'd like to compliment the developer and their staff on the fine work they've done with their presentation, their layouts. However, I have some major concerns regarding things that have already been talked about, but I want to say what my point is. The traffic situation, I met with city staff at one time to talk about if there is, in fact, a definitive plan to do something about the problem with traffic on Benita Beach Road. Most days during season, when I try to leave Spanish Wells, I can't even get out of the gate because all the traffic has got the intersection blocked. Even when I have a green light, I can't get out. When I come south on 41 to turn on Benita Beach Road to come back east to Spanish Wells, I set through three or four arrows just to make a left-hand turn. So I am really concerned about the addition of the traffic that is going to occur because of this project. I'm not against the project, I think it's a beautiful plan, I think it would enhance Benita Springs greatly. It's just, there's not a definitive plan to deal with traffic, it's already chaos. I think it's going to get worse. I'm somewhat of the belief that they're optimistic about how much shuttle is going to get used. I've traveled all over with my family for many, many years. We didn't use shuttles, we got a car, a rental, or drove our own, so we could go where we wanted to go, where we wanted to go, and didn't have to wait on the shuttle. My next concern is, I actually built with my friend his house right behind the project on Luke Street, and through seven months of construction during season, the amount of traffic that was talked about earlier, that goes down Luke Street and across Quails West, all the way down to the Publix parking lot and cutting through the, is significant. When we were trying to bring construction trucks and traffic in there, it was utter chaos back there building that house when that was going on. So with that, I am opposed to the project as defined unless they can come up and stipulate that there is significant definitive plan for traffic on Benita Beach Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Yes, sir, my name's Tracy Bailey.
My name's Tracy Bailey, B.A.I.L.A.Y. I've been a resident of Benita Springs for about seven years. I work at Publix right over here on 41 and Benita Beach Road. I am for the project, I think it'd be a great economic value for the Benita Springs, and I'm for the project, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Next, please.
Yes, hi, I am Rochelle Kolankiewicz, it's K.O.L.A.N.K.I.E.W.I.C.Z. And I'm a resident of Benita Springs. I live and work here. I'm currently a property owner at Meadowlark Lane, just south of Benita Beach Road, live basically behind the mini golf course. And as I said, I live and work here. My father has lived on Fort Myers Beach since they bought property in the 1960s, so I've been coming here my whole life. I'm definitely for growth and would like to see the area developed. I like some of the elements of the project that are being presented, I like the attention to the green space, I like the idea of the buffer from the road. I do have concerns about whether the impact is being adequately demonstrated and communicated here. Seems like you guys have some good questions about parking and the construction impact and everything, so I'm glad to see that. I hope that the conversation lasts as long as it needs to in order to properly examine the project. I'm concerned that we haven't finished the traffic study yet. One note from the traffic study is that there's discussion of slicing my neighborhood in two and having traffic route down Windsor Road. So if we're adding a whole lot of traffic to this project, I would like to see how that mixes in and not rush something ahead, just to get pre-sales in, in time for season. We haven't analyzed the construction traffic yet, so I have concerns there. I can tell you that I live on Meadowlark, I regularly pull out and I turn left, and no, I don't really think that we can accommodate the construction traffic at this point, let alone what is going to come beyond that. I hope that we can take a look at it. I'm just concerned that it seems like the proposal is to approve the rezoning now and then figure out the traffic later. We had a couple of comments to that effect earlier. Once the construction is finished, there are 11 parking lots, I think he said, but we're not clear how many parking spots that has. Hopefully, we can study the traffic impact. I'm also concerned about our fire station is right there on that corner, I haven't heard that mentioned, how we're going to assure that emergency services have access to the public. I have seen them, I live right there, I have seen them having trouble getting out during season and during high-impact traffic times, so hopefully, we can take a look at that. There's a proposal to move the zoning from 40 to 390 hotel rooms. That's 10 times the number of hotel rooms. Who services that type of property? Those are service jobs, housekeeping, food service, that type of thing. The slide said that there would be 371 jobs created directly from the project, income of $10.2 million a year. Even if you count the indirect jobs, it was like 500-something, it's an average of about $27,000 a year. You can't really live here for that, you can't live west of 41 for that, I know, I certainly can't. The median household income in Benita Springs is $52,629, according to the website, so I'm not sure how that mixes with our community. Haven't seen a total, I'm not real clear on the plan for where they're all going to park, that seems a little gray, but they are parking across the street from my house, and there's going to be a bus stop there to accommodate them, so I'd like to know more about the attention to crime and safety in the area. It's a very livable, very walkable neighborhood, a small-town feel, and I hope that we can try to retain that. I think that the plan has a lot of good elements that do preserve that, but I hope that we can take a good, close look at it. And finally, there's a plan to reduce the amount of retail and business space that comes with the project. There was originally as much as 60,000 square feet, and we're reducing that, I'm confused if it's 18 or 23, but it's basically being cut into a third. And so we're taking the opportunity for locals to start businesses, create good-paying jobs, earn a living wage, and create, you know, good opportunities here economically in this area, and we're taking all of that prime space, as they mentioned, it is a prime location, and we're turning that into service jobs, housekeeping, food service, that type of thing. So just something to consider and take a look at as we use our precious land. And also, I would just like to quickly mention that there is going to be a lot of traffic on that road, and our beach isn't that big, so I hope we can also consider how the four or eight shuttles, or however many they're planning on using, where are these folks going to go? What are they going to patronize? And what amenities do we have for all of these folks? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir, step forward.
Thank you. My name's Anthony Mansolillo, M.A.N.S.O.L.I.L.L.O. I'm also a Benita developer. I've got about three and a half acres of downtown and still acquiring, and I see this as a strong catalytic move for Benita. And also, I've been looking at the area to the rear, to the north of the project, and I think there's a lot of room for redevelopment down there as well. And I think this is going to be a strong catalyst to get a lot of that stuff, I think this is going to push the property values up in the north section, right behind it. I know people always worry about traffic coming out of the Boston-Providence market, I haven't seen any traffic here yet, but this is normal growth, and I think they've well responded to the problems of traffic. I think it should be approved, I think it's a good thing for Benita, it creates a lot more tax revenue without having to put kids in schools, you know, it doesn't require the services that homes require, and we could use more of a balance of that. So that's what I wanted to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, everybody, my name is Naomi Sottilay, S.O.T.T.I.L.E., and I recently moved here, and this project, I really think it's going to be amazing, especially, I'm 28-years-old, and I want places to bring family, and I want hotels to, you know, host families, and so I'm just really, really excited to see this coming, and I really hope you guys get to approve it. So, God bless everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Antonette DiFilippo, D.I.F.I.L.L.I.P.O., and I've lived in this town for 20 years, and I've watched it grow. My house is off of Old 41, and I'm glad to see the improvements. I think it'll help everyone's values, and it's a long time coming, since the crash, so I'm glad to see it happening. And I think you guys will take care of the traffic, no problem.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Hi, how are you? My name is Barb Rich, R.I.C.H., and I moved to Benita Springs in 1984, so I've seen tons and tons of changes. Been in real estate most of my life. I currently live in Fort Myers, but plan on moving back to Benita Springs within a year or so, and so that I can be closer to work. I work at Benita Village, so I am obviously in support of the project, and I'm looking forward to seeing a resort similar to the Ritz-Carlton in Naples, and I think that's what Benita Village will be to Benita Springs.
Thank you. Come forward, sir, and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. My name's Scott Henney, H.E.N.N.E.Y. I've been a resident of Florida for the last 21 years. I'm also representing today Toby Weinstein, W.E.I.N.S.T.E.I.N., who is, and she signed the necessary paperwork to let me represent her, and you have that. Also representing Sue, Susan Pollak, P.O.L.L.O.K. They are both present board members of Benita Village 1. Toby Weinstein is president, actually, I'm past president of BV1 when it was first started. I guess my, one concern that I would like to address, that somebody brought up just a second ago, was that the shuttle service will not be utilized. I have a unit in Benita Village, it's at 3941 Ken's Way, unit number 1305. I rent that unit out, I stay there sometimes, sometimes our children stay there when they come down. And they use the shuttle, my renters use the shuttle a lot. I use the shuttle sometimes when my children are staying there, and grandchildren, so, and I think it's utilized by everybody. I know Jerry, who runs the shuttle, is busy as heck during the season, so I think with the, that's just with one shuttle. So I think if you add more than one, you're going to see that it will take a lot of the traffic concerns away, anyway. I think something's going to be built on this ground, and it seems to me like you would want to consider and approve something that's going to be a first-class development that would have a huge financial impact for the city of Benita Springs. Also, it would, I think it would be great for Benita Beach Road, and also for the property values of past, present, and future people that are owners in Benita Village. So I would strongly urge you to approve. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Come forward, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm Kathy Guardia, G.U.A.R.D.I.A., and I moved here from Washington, DC in 1989, where I was in finance and management consulting, and I got into real estate, and so I've seen the whole development of the area and what's gone on and played a part in some of it. And I've seen all the changes, the beautification of downtown Benita, and all of the corridors, but Benita Beach has kind of been left out, and I think it's time for, you know, development, redevelopment, everything to start on Benita Beach Road. And you've got a developer who's willing to work with you, and I think they're going to do a beautiful project. I think it can only enhance the whole area and start the redevelopment of Benita Beach Road. And I'm all for the project, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, sir. Still morning, right?
Good morning. My name's Steve Crosby, C.R.O.S.B.Y. I'm a resident of Benita, I'm a resident of the neighborhood right behind Benita Bay, so I guess I'd be one of the residents would be impacted by this. I think that the developer has done a whole lot of work putting together a pretty comprehensive proposal, but in some ways, I feel that we're, by even entertaining this at this point, it's kind of putting the cart in front of the horse. In that, the city's been, I guess with the county, trying to do traffic studies. In talking to the, to one of the owners and to a couple of the staff, the, it's not clear to me what the traffic patterns are going to be. Obviously, if you're going to build a 390-room hotel, and you have permission right now, or an okay, to build 40, that's going to be quite an impact, that's going to be a huge impact. Let's just look at the two streets, Luke Street and Meadowlark. What is the impact going to be on those two streets, which are small, tiny residential streets right now? Luke Street, I think one of the commissioners here brought up that Luke Street, right now, is basically a one-lane street for three-quarters of the street that is allowed for two-way use. In talking to the owner, his feeling, and again, it's a little early, but his feeling is that right now, a lot of the traffic going in and out of these units, the hotel and the condo units, is going to be, a lot of it supported by Luke Street, and also the parking garage. I guess my feelings are that this is probably, in the long run, something there is going to be good for the whole economy of Benita Springs, but I think the traffic studies, you know, the guy from Boston, I'm from Boston originally, he talked about, you know, this is nothing. Well, I don't know, when I'm in-season on Beach Road, it's something, you're there, you're backed up. Somebody else said, well, you know, there's a traffic light there. Well, the traffic light is there, but the traffic light's not there because of Luke Street. The traffic light's there because of Vanderbilt. If Vanderbilt wasn't there, there wouldn't be a traffic light there. Luke Street is not a big enough street to support a traffic light. I mean, the next street down, which is part of the proposal, Imperial River, doesn't have a traffic light, and that's a, that's a, you know, a much larger street, and it's a far, far more used street. So I guess my reservations would be that one is the size, the impact of this, it's really huge. You're, you know, you're increasing the hotel allowable's by 10 times, it's increasing, I think, by a third or more, the number of condominium units in the property, and that is going to have a tremendous impact, not only to Beach Road, but to the neighborhood that surrounds, that surrounds the property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Jan Ruhsdorfer, that's R.U.H.S.T.O.R.F.E.R., and I currently work at Benita Village, and it's a great place, it's like paradise there, and I think this would be a major asset to add that to our already beautiful resort, bring in jobs and income for the city of Benita Springs, and I'm totally in full support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Farrell, L.I.S.A.F.A.R.R.E.L.L. I've been in the hotel industry for over 25 years, I've had the opportunity to open two hotels from the ground up, and I want to speak to the fact of what it revitalizes. In my experience, I was surrounded by empty storefronts, empty land for years, and during the construction of the hotels, and for years after, you saw the empty storefronts come to life, new developments, new jobs, it was amazing. Also, speaking to the businesses that are there, and I think unfortunately, on Benita Beach Road, some of them are revolving doors, they change all the time. What we saw is people come to us and say, "Thank you. Thank you for keeping us in business and making us a success for the future." So I'm in full support of this development.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Tyler Conigliaro, that's C.O.N.I.G.L.I.A.R.O. I am a graduate of Florida Gulf Coast University, but more importantly, I was born and raised in Benita Springs, I've spent my entire life here, and I've seen it grow throughout the years, from the time I went to that school behind you not too long ago. I also live on Meadowlark Street, and I've spoken to several residents in that area about the project, and many of them are in favor of this, as am I. I think the project, when you look at it, it has a future in mind, it's a very proactive project. They're trying their best to address the traffic situation, also the environmental impact, sustainability, things like that, that are important to our town. I think it would be important and an asset to the city to have people that have never been here before to be driving down Benita Beach Road and see a complex like this on their right side when they go by. It's a very impressive building and area. The plan looks sound, and like I said, it's proactive, and I think it will help beautify this town that I've called my home my entire life. This building was built 10 years ago with a future in mind. The Old 41 revitalization was built with a future in mind, those are both public works. This is a private sector work that will work to help our town and ensure that the city is awesome. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Next, please.
Hi there. My name is Kylie Troyer, my last name T.R.O.Y.E.R. I have lived in Florida for eight years, I have lived in Benita for three. I can't imagine living anywhere else in Florida. Benita is home to me. I live in Village Walk and have for the past year, and I absolutely love it. Benita Beach Road needs development like this. Benita Village is willing to update their complex and make this a desirable area to visit and to live. Benita needs to take advantage of the tourism that is currently being routed to Naples, to Fort Myers, and now to Estero. We have been bypassed. I love and am very proud to call this area home, I want to see Benita grow for the better, and I believe that Benita Village is the perfect opportunity to beautify and enhance Benita Springs. And I hope that they have a very positive impact on our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Were you sworn in?
Yes.
Okay, and, okay.
I knew we were close to the end there.
If I could have you two raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm testimony you provide is truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, please proceed.
Hi, my name is Murray McCag, I'm an owner at Benita Village. Apparently, I'm one of the few owners that officially object to this, to this development, and I just want to be very clear to start. Everything that's been done here is exceptional, there's professionals involved in this, Omar and his development team have done a fantastic job, we've seen it, it looks great. I have a young family, I've been visiting Benita Village, or the Benita Village area, actually, for about eight years. I own, I bought, actually, on July 1st, 2012, the same day Omar did, in which time, things changed, okay? The changes, you know, he's brought some excitement to the village. We're a small, little 80-unit, you know, resort-style area that we love to come to, that our families come to. All the people that come and experience Benita Village, renters, I rented for a while, they're families, they come for the quiet enjoyment of the village atmosphere. What we're presented here is a huge project, and there's a lot of economic benefits for the city of Benita Springs, Benita Springs, and the whole area, and a developer is very interested in taking advantage of that, I understand that. What I object to is density and huge numbers. I mean, I've done, I'm no expert at parking, but you hit on parking, and I've got a little thing here that I'd like to share. If you want to throw that up on the presentation, whoever could do that, there's a PDF file on there. I did a little kind of quick analysis, because you were trying to balance the numbers earlier, on parking. And, you know, I looked at, maybe, I'll just wait for it to come up, because it'll help, it'll help to understand kind of what my concerns are, and what a few people's concerns are at Benita Village. And I'm a former board member of Benita Village, and I, you know, voted to oppose this, but I voted to oppose it for one reason only, density and volume. Yeah, so this is just, and you're not going to see this very well, but I just had a quick kind of phase-one, 80-units, new residential, oh, I even got a, I don't know how this works exactly, Jackie? Perfect. Push the green button, here we are, okay. So we're currently zoned for 80 units, 140 additional units, 50,000 square feet, and 40 hotel. We've all heard today that, you know, this is 40 to 400, 10 times the size of what we're currently zoned for, and there's your numbers, and you can see, we're, it's a residential community with 85, currently zoned for 85% residential and 15% commercial, commercial meaning hotels. And the current development proposal is looking for 36% residential, 64% commercial. Well, I personally have a problem with that, I want to come down to a residential environment, not a commercial environment. So right off the bat, that's my one concern, and then let's take a look at parking. Like, we don't have any plans on parking, you heard it this morning, there's no plans, they don't know, you were on to it. So let's talk about, right now, we have 220- So let's talk about, right now, we have 220 residential parking, or residential parking spaces, sorry, I don't have, I have, I'll tell you what we have exactly right now, because I went and counted them yesterday. So I know what we have, and I know what we're proposed to have, and I know what the numbers are in the parking garage, and they just don't add up, it doesn't make any sense. We're going to have cars coming out our ears. And I'd like to know if anyone in the room has come here by public transit today. Did you come by public transit? We all have cars. Everyone that rents in Bonita Village has a car. We come from the airport, $79 for three days, it's great, $79 for three days. We all come with a car. We all go to different locations other than the beach. The beach shuttle, I've used many times, my family uses it every day when we're here. It's great. We go to the beach and back. That's great, because you can't park at the beach, that's one thing. But we currently have, we have 55 guest parking spots, and we have 80 units, so every unit has a parking spot. So there's currently 80 units parking spot and 55 guests. Their plan calls for 39 of those being eliminated with the hotel, because they're going to build out front, and our parking for all our guests and facilities are out front. So where are those 35 going to go? Well, presumably, in the parking garage, okay? So there's 35 off the 350, so we're already down 10%, just for our public, our guests. Okay? The next problem is, we've got employees. So I made a few phone calls, I'm no expert, but I made a few phone calls to hotel consultants. And they said, "A five-star resort hotel, which Omar wants to build," and, you know, like, everyone wants luxury, we want the best, we want the best. Well, the employee-to-room ratio for a luxury hotel is 75, or 0.75 per room. So what does that mean? That means 350, I use 350 because we used 40 for the other one, so you can gross this up, this is actually conservative, this number. We have hotel guests of 350, we have residential units of 220, we have hotel employees of 263, based on a hotel consultant, and I have it here, PFK Hospitality Research, a CB Richard Ellis company. I call, and I have the information right here, I'll gladly leave it for you, 75, 0.75 employee-room ratio. So now we're up to, what are we up to here, 350, 263? Oh, and we want a conference, we want a conference center. We heard earlier that we need a ballroom, because you have to have a ballroom or a big meeting space for a big hotel. I've talked to people, and I have friends of mine that run hotels, clients of mine that run hotels, and they say, "Look, you can't fill rooms without a convention center. You just can't, this is just nonsense." So, we add, I'm just saying 150. We have weddings, of course, because there, you know, there's going to be weddings at this, I mean, we're talking the Ritz-Carlton, that's what we're talking about here. So right now, we've got, those are the number of people there, all with cars, because we all have cars. It's, like, this isn't, we're, we're a car society. It's unfortunate, and it'd be great to be changing that, but we aren't. We talked about the cart before the horse, this is what we're talking about, right here. So here we are, we're 1,041 parking spots in this development. That's what I, that's just my crude number, and it's reasonable, I'm a reasonable guy, I just went through the numbers. You need, you know, based on our ratio of parking today of, what'd we say, 55 guests and 80 units, you know, we probably need 346 parking spots for 220 units. I don't know, it seems reasonable to me. We're going to move 35 of them to this parking garage. We need, you need to have parking for every guest. You can't park, "Oh, we're going to have 200, it's only going to be occupied 60% of the time." It's just not the way it's going to be. We need 350 parking spots for our hotel guests. We need 195, and that's based on 67%, maybe that's max, I have no idea, I'm guessing, so take it for what it's worth. Maybe an expert can comment on this. We've got 100, what did I say here, I can't see what, one of the devices on, near vision here, 195, and then we've got a convention center, I had 150 people coming at any given time. And don't forget, I talked to my convention friends, they say, "Oh yeah, you need room for your semi-trucks, because they bring equipment in, you've got to be able to park, you know, big semi-trucks, because they're going to have conventions." Because the only way you can fill a hotel like this is with convention staff. Conventions, we're going to have big conventions, we're going to fill the place, fill the place, fill the place, all the year round. So, I saw earlier today, and I couldn't get a direct answer out of the developer, and I asked, and I asked, and I didn't get it, and that's okay, because that's, we heard today, they don't know. And here we are, with 1,041 parking spots, and I'll tell you, if you go back to the presentation where they have all the buildings, and, we, we, maybe we could have that up, could we put that up right now? Can we put up the, the presentation that just shows the site plan? Please? Sorry, I'm not as prepared as everybody else. Because let's, it's parking, my, my problem's parking and people. There's cars going to be galore, they're going to be parking in our parking spot, they're going to be swimming in our swimming pool, that's what's going to happen. Everyone thinks it's all great for value, and it's, you know, and who knows what's going to happen to value, that's a whole other discussion. And, and, you know, we'd heard about earlier that there's economic value, I mean, Christ, make it 1,000, and we'll have great economic value in Bonita Springs, it's great. I don't know where we're going to park everybody, I think I've made my point, but I want to show you this, because this is part of the issue. And we talk about shuttle service and all the nonsense that goes along with shuttle. Oh, there's, okay, that'll work, thank you. Sorry, Jackie. So, this building right here, you know, we could probably ask, and they'll probably know, because they should know, how many units are going to be in this building? Well, if this is 75 feet, this building, and this building's, we know that the city doesn't want this to be any more than 55, because that's the current zoning. This one's going to be 75 feet, this one's going to be 75 feet. Well, you know, this one right here, I live in this one right here, where are we here? I live in this building right here. It's a five-story building, 55 feet, I live on the third floor. I love it here, by the way, and I love Bonita Village, and I'm not one of these guys that's going to sell my unit, because he's going to do this or propose to do this, like a lot of other people are doing. This has exactly, we have four floors of residence, and I believe, Omar, you can confirm this, or someone can confirm this, there's about 10, there's about 10 units per floor, so there's 40 units in that building. So there's 40 parking, parking spots, we all have one, beat it, in that building, 40 parking spots, that fit in that building right there. Well, I don't know what's going on in here, because I can't do the numbers without looking at it, but the parking for this building will probably be just enough, or not enough, if it's 75 feet. There's just not enough parking, and no one's showing me anything. That one, and we heard earlier that this is going to be employee parking here. Well, where are these people, this five-story, this condos? Where are they going to park? So then we got, you know, so this is the parking spot for this project, and we heard it's 350. Well, let's go back to the numbers here, the numbers are 1,000, 1,050. That's my problem. And that's all I'm going to say, because I oppose it for that reason, I do not oppose development. I'm a Realtor that works for developers, by the way, in Toronto. And I came down here from Toronto, because I feel strongly about this. I commend this group for what they've done, for all the designs, the concepts, it's just too big, you know? And I said this to Omar earlier, and he laughed at me, because he said, "You can't build 150 resort-style hotel." I said, "I'd support 150, because the 150, if I did the math, it'd probably work." Or 100. And then he says, "Well, wait a second here, you can't, we can't, we can't, there's, there's no one going to build 100 unit, or 100, there's no operator that's going to buy into 100-unit or 150-unit hotel." And I, and that's bunk, I went and did some research, I went and looked again. So, you want the list? Here's, here's the list. And I did buy rooms, and I tried to figure out room heights, but of course, I'm just a layperson, so we've got the Marco Beach Ocean Resort, five-star, 98 rooms. We've got 189 rooms, the La Playa Beach Resort, five-star, 189 rooms. Of course, we've got Naples Grand Beach Resort, which is 474 rooms, I tried to find out how big these lots were, and parking, and, I don't know, like, maybe, maybe the city can tell us this. 125 rooms at Edgewater Beach Hotel Resort, five-star hotel. The Ritz-Carlton Golf Course is 295 golf course resort rooms, five-star. Then we got Bellicera Hotel, 100 rooms, five-star. We've got Naples Bay Resort, 85 unit, four-star. We got the Inn at Pelican Bay, 100 units, six floors boutique. And then we've got, of course, the Hyatt Regency at 454 units, at 18 floors. And of course, I don't know what, how many floors are at the, let me just have a look here, we've got, of course, we've got the, the Ritz-Carlton, which we all know is 20 or 30, I don't know how many floors it is, but you guys know, it's big. So, it's just too much, that's all, it's just too much. Scale it back, be reasonable. This is unreasonable, it's great for the community and everything else, but it's just an unreasonable number. It's too much, too big, and I don't know if it fits into a business model of his and how it should work, but we got way too many cars, and way too many people, and way too many traffic problems already, and this is just going to add more to it. And, you know, I don't know what's going to happen, but hopefully, you'll look at some of these important issues and try to figure this out, where we have parking at 1,000 units on a, on a reasonable basis, with 350 at the, in a, in a four-car garage. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you, yes.
Hi, Neil Montgomery for the record. In your research regarding parking, did you examine the Land Development Code requirements?
Well, you know, I looked at the cities, and it said 1.2 for a hotel, you know, the answer is no, really, but
Okay.
This is, this is reasonable. I, I did a reasonable approach, I think, you guys can decide that, and I'm going to leave you copies.
Well, sir, do you think we're obligated to follow the Land Development Code?
You are, I think you are.
Okay, and do you know whether or not we've asked for deviation from the parking requirements?
I, I don't, I don't.
Okay, it will help you feel better to know, we have not asked for deviation from the parking requirements.
That's fine, and
Okay.
I just, I'm looking at it from an approach that, you know, it's reasonable. And, and, and I don't think there's any disputing that there's 70, there's 75 employees, a ratio of 75, 0.75 for rooms. Like, that's the thing we're missing through all of this, that's a big part, and the other is just, just, number of, like, the convention-style issue here. You know, like, you have weddings, like, the, the, one of the member, or owners at Bonita Village actually runs the wedding business at the Ritz-Carlton. I talked to him one day, and he said, "Jeez, yeah, you know, you know, that's our push and our business, and you know, that's just getting another 150 to 200," and I'm just using 150 as, I have no idea what it is. Ask them. How many people? I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just using a reasonable, layperson's guess at how the parking would work here, and I don't think it supports it, based on what I see. And I, and I think a scaled-back version would be outstanding.
Sir, thank you for your comments, your research, and your input, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, please. Hi.
Hi. My name is Tammy Beck, I'm the manager of Bonita
How do you spell Beck?
Beck, B-E-C-K.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'm the manager of Bonita Beach Trailer Park Co-op. We are a resident-owned senior community just north of this development on Meadowlark Lane, and I was asked to speak today on behalf of my community in opposition of this. We also, I also submitted several letters from my residents to support their concerns. All of their concerns you've heard today, it's all the same thing, but their main thing is emergency services. Currently, during season, the residents of my community, and basically that whole neighborhood, are caged in. You know, there's no way out and no way in. And we've seen that effect with emergency services, fire trucks, ambulances, that's a big concern of my senior residents. So they just are concerned that with this additional impact on traffic, people on Meadowlark Lane, how are the emergency services going to be able to get to them, not just them in that community, but the surrounding residents as well. Many of, you know, we're not opposed to development, beautification, it's all wonderful and everyone loves it, but not at, not when it negatively impacts the residents in the surrounding neighborhood. And that's all.
Thank you very much. One more, anybody else after this lady, please come forward. And ma'am, were you sworn in?
Yes, I was.
Okay.
Anita, A-N-I-T-A, Coyne, C-O-Y-N-E. I found out about this project, and basically, I live on the other side of the dog track, but I spend a lot of time down at that end of town, too, and I've seen the traffic. And yes, the parking. So I'm just reiterating what everybody else has said today, that that is a serious issue. I think it's a beautiful idea for the city, but I think it does have to be downsized. And I think that by keeping it at the 55-foot level, you can still accommodate a beautiful facility there that will enhance our community, like you're doing on Old 41, as our gateway to the golf, it would be very, very nice, but I think it needs downsized. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. My name's Andrew Desalvo, D-E-S-A-L-V-O. I'm before you this morning, representing the owner of Track TC-5, Ms. Jeannie Wall. One of you gentlemen asked the question, the history, and so I'd like to explain it, so that's clear, because it wasn't clear to me either. That property was owned by Jeannie's mother, Mrs. Umbrich, and subsequently sold to the original developer of Bonita Village. That property then went through foreclosure, and Omer picked up the balance of the property, but Ms. Wall, the heir of Ms. Umbrich, took the property back through that foreclosure. So she owns that property again, she's been in the family for, as long as I've been here, and I've been here for 36 years. So what we'd like to, to confirm, and actually clarify with either the zoning department or the applicant, is that, condition 12C primarily, under the list of conditions, there are two items in there that, that I think pertain to us, and one is the beginning of 12C, which is on page 21 of 24, of your
Twenty
Twenty-one of 24. Oh, you know what?
Twenty-three of 28.
I've got it all.
Twenty-three of 28.
Yeah, 23 of 28. Okay, I'm sorry, I've got the, one of the redline drafts, so hopefully, this is still relevant. Please correct me if it's not, Jackie. The beginning that I had said, "No direct access is permitted from the project to Bonita Beach Road between Imperial River Road and Luke Street." And just for clarification, I just want to clarify that if Track TC-5 is developed, I presume they can direct access to Imperial River Road.
Excuse me. You're referring to
You know what, I may not even have the right
For the record, Jaclyn Gensen, he's referring to the transportation condition, which is 11E, oh, sorry, 11
11C, page 21, okay. Actually, I'm referring to
Under transportation?
It's a carryover
Transportation 13, on page 24, 28.
Oh, Lee County DOTs.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Lee County.
This is Lee County DOTs, and, so conditions C and D are carryover conditions from the 2007 zoning ordinance, so these are not new ordinance conditions by Lee County DOT.
Right, right, and my point is, at that time, it was owned by a single entity, and subsequent to that, Mrs. Umbrich's heirs have taken back TC-5. And so because of that, one, we wanted to make sure we had direct access to Imperial, I presume that's still the case, even though she wouldn't be able to direct access Bonita Beach Road. The more, I'm sorry, Jackie, go ahead.
So that's how I read the condition, I can verify with Lee County DOT, though.
Okay, thank you. The second part is really the more pertinent section, "The developer must convey across easement pursuant to the LDC code to provide access to the parcel located in the northwest quadrant of Luke-Vanderbilt Bonita Beach Road intersection prior to the approval of any development order for the portion of Bonita Village that's located west of Luke Street." Well, what's west of Luke Street is just TC-1, which is the proposed parking garage for the hotel, and TC-5, which is owned by my client. I want to make sure that if TC-5 were developed, they're not required to, one, convey across easement, okay, before they can develop, nor put the road in. It seems to be crazily onerous on that owner. So I just want a clarification on that, and if that stipulation stays in, it says the developer, which I presume is, you know, Omer, but because of the history of the parcel, and there is a separate owner now and there's a separate owner now, I want to make sure that we're not responsible to convey across easement when we develop to Luke Street, because we can directly access to Imperial.
Yeah, that's a question for staff to answer for us.
For the record, Jaclyn Gensen, I will work with Ms. Montgomery and Lee County DOT, so we can address those concerns and reword the condition accordingly. Because it's a Lee County DOT condition, I would not, we can definitely discuss today at this hearing, changes to that condition, but I would have to also coordinate with Lee County DOT to see if they have any objection to any changes.
Question, Roger Brunswick, for the record. But I'm reading here, the developer must provide stubouts to these adjoining parcels.
Yeah, let, let us look at that condition, and then maybe I can discuss it during the presentation. That way it can di- digest it.
Thank you.
And it should be tied between now and council to look at, and I'm sure that we'll, we'll get to something that works.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Well, thank you for listening to me. Thank you, Neil, for that. And then, in regards to the, the designation, what we worked out with the developer is this. I want to make sure we're clear on this, because you raised the question. They are going to designate parcel TC5, 18,000 square feet of commercial, or up to 40 hotel units, or any additional units that aren't used by the developer. I've been a commercial developer and broker for 36 years in Benita. It's impossible to develop both on that site, and the maximum number of square footage that I think we could put on that site is probably 18,000 square feet. If we did none, could you put a 40-unit hotel? Yes. And might there be a little commercial entity to it? Yes. But it'd all be required through the Lee, or through your development regulations as to how much can be there. So it's really an either-or, from a practical standpoint, not an addition-to. Thank you for your time, gentlemen. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did I swear you in?
I was sworn, I was at the end of line, you didn't see me.
He was there.
I saw him. I scoped him out.
Okay, so you two have this one.
My name's Ray Atkinson, A-T-K-I-N-S-O-N. I've been doing construction here in Benita for a little over 20 years now. Actually, the company that I'm working with is doing your downtown redevelopment at this point, and I'm sure you guys all understand and have all witnessed that during the construction, it's not really what you want to use to, to judge a project. It's not the, the prettiest process. But I've had worked with a, a lot of developers here. Omar's group's done a great job of reaching out to the public, getting a lot of input from folks. The construction of it is, is really consistent, I think, with what Benita's been really pushing to do, as far as their growth plan and what they want to see. I have seen communities kind of get stuck in the chicken-or-the-egg position, to where if you don't approve the growth to go forward, you don't get the revenue back to be able to put in the infrastructure then, too. It's, it, it puts things a long way down the road if you try to collect all the money to build what you, to what you think might be there. If you get the participation of the developers as they're going in, as, as he's been willing to do, you can, you can handle those problems, and you actually have revenue to, to deal with the expansion or some of the traffic issues. And I think he's done a great job of dealing as best he could with the traffic issues in the meantime, until something is done with that corridor. When it comes to the financial impact on the community, of course, I think we've all seen the value of that, and I don't think we've seen any, any projects that, that do move forward like this, that don't ultimately become a, a large value to the community. And I love to see jobs. So with that, I'm, I'm supporting, and I urge you to support the, the project. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment at this time? Seeing none, we would like to go ahead with the staff report, if the lights hold up. I don't know what's going on here.